Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Sterling Heights City Council to order. Please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them courage and wisdom to do it as right for all citizens. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mrs. Riska. Can we please have the roll call?
Mayor Taylor.
Here.
Mrs. Saroski.
Here.
Mrs. Kowski.
Present.
Mr. Radke.
Present.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Present.
Mr. Shannon.
Present.
Mrs. Yarko.
Present.
Thank you, Council. We need approval of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Kowski.
Moved to approve the agenda.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. First item on our agenda tonight is a report from our city manager, Mark Vanderpool. Mr. Vanderpool.
Thank you, Mayor. First, as everyone knows, Memorial Day will be celebrated on Monday, May 28, 2018. All city offices and the 41A District Court Building will be closed for the entire Memorial Day. Refuge collection will be delayed on Monday only. I should say will not be collected on Monday only, and then there'll be a delay for one day the entire week. Normal business hours will resume, of course, on Tuesday. And speaking of Memorial Day, the Sterling Heights 39th Memorial Day festivities begin with a 9:00 AM Memorial Day ceremony in the courtyard between City Hall and the Police Department. In conjunction with the city of Sterling Heights, 50th anniversary being celebrated also this year, the parade theme is celebrating 50 years honoring those who serve, past and present and future. The ceremony will feature remarks from the 2018 Grand Marshal Joseph B. Romano, Mayor Michael Taylor, and our commission chairman, Jeannie Shabath. Music from the Motor City Blend Chorus, formerly Sweet Adeline and First Michigan Colonel Fife and Drum Corps will also add to the respectful patriotic tone of the event. For more information on the parade or the ceremony, please contact our Community Relations Department, or you can visit our website. And just a reminder, as we get into the holiday season, state law prohibits the city from banning the use of consumer fireworks on the day before, the day of, and the day after a national holiday. This means that consumer-grade fireworks can be used in Sterling Heights, but only for these 30 days annually. The national holidays are New Year's Day, Martin Luther King Jr.'s birthday, Washington's birthday, Memorial Day, Independence Day, Labor Day, Columbus Day, Veterans Day, Thanksgiving, and Christmas. During these days, legal fireworks can only be discharged from 8:00 AM to midnight and only on private property with permission from the property owner. Any violations committed during the discharge of fireworks will still be enforced, including disturbing the peace, violation of noise or nuisance ordinance, and creating or depositing litter. The city has enacted an ordinance which prohibits the use of consumer-grade fireworks for the remaining 335 days of the year. So again, if you use fireworks outside of those 30 days, you risk getting ticketed by the Police Department. And even during those 30 days, the hours are again between 8:00 AM and no later than midnight. Wanted to take just a minute to update everyone on a new development. You may have been wondering what's going on with the linens and things up at near Lakeside. Just off of M-59, there's now a fence surrounding this property, which is on the screen before you. So very soon, this building will be demolished. Thankfully, it's been vacant for a number of years now, and the only thing it's really been used for is for a Halloween party store. But once it's demolished in the next few weeks, it'll soon be replaced with this beautiful restaurant, BJ's Brew House, which is very popular in California, and they are now expanding into other states, including Michigan. This will be their second or third store, depending on when the actual opening is here. But this construction will be starting very soon. So you'll see this very aesthetically pleasing building will be constructed over the next year, and then adjacent to it will be a commercial center that will also go on the same site. So look forward to not only just a really beautiful building, but a lot of landscaping and other features that are really going to clean up that site and add to the entire Lakeside District. And speaking of economic development, we're going to have an update shortly from our Economic Development Advisor, Luke Bonner. But before we get to Mr. Bonner, at the conclusion of tonight's agenda, I'm requesting that the city council convene a closed session pursuant to Section 8C, 8E, 8H of the Open Meetings Act to consult with the city attorney regarding three confidential written legal opinions, and to discuss two matters in connection with the negotiations of collective bargaining agreements. And now, Mayor, if you will allow me, I'd like to introduce our Economic Development Advisor, Luke Bonner, who's going to go into a little more detail of economic development activity in the city.
Mr. Bonner.
Thank you, Mr. Vanderpool, and Mayor Taylor, and good evening, members of city council. Do have a brief update tonight on the economic development happenings in the community over the last, I would say, six to eight months. What I'd like to go through is, number one, just quickly what economic development does on sort of a day-to-day basis, give a quick snapshot of what's happening in the community economically, and go through updates on various projects we have been working on. So generally speaking, economic development, a lot of what we do is what I would consider business outreach or marketing of the community. And to give you an idea of this last fiscal year, we will be around 150 total meetings for business outreach. That includes new business attraction prospects, so discussing with companies on coming into the community for the first time. Retention, that's where we go out and meet with existing companies and try to help them with their specific needs. Bankers, which are a great source of referrals to help on new projects happening in the community, and then also the real estate development community, which is a combination of real estate developers and the real estate brokerage community, all of which are a vast network of finding opportunities for new investment into the community. We also do quite a bit of business connections, and that is a result, really, of, number one, with the amount of meetings that we have and relationships that we create on behalf of the city, we are able to strategically help either existing companies in the community making introductions from company to company. A perfect example of that was I was at the Macomb Defense Expo a couple of weeks ago and brought a couple of local companies to that show to meet with General Dynamics Land Systems and BAE Systems for introduction's sake for potential new business opportunities. We also run into a lot of situations where a company may be doing something for the first time, and they need a real estate broker, they want to partner with a developer, they're looking for an attorney, and we, of course, through a network, are able to refer them to other people to help on particular issues that they might have, or even to a governmental agency, whether it's Macomb County, State of Michigan, MDEQ, MDOT, for example. We're able to make a lot of those introductions and to help a company with certain aspects of what they're trying to accomplish. We spend a lot of time, what I'll call, development process support or real estate navigation. That comes in a lot of different shapes or forms. But typically, if a company is doing something in the community for the first time, a lot of what they do is they will need somebody to kind of help them walk through the process. And so on a lot of occasions, we make introductions to the rest of the economic development team, to planning, to building, to engineering, to the attorney's office, making sure that everyone feels very comfortable as they're coming into the community and what kind of process that would look like for them from basically point A to point B or construction. And then also a lot of strategy work. That's internal strategy of how we're managing projects to external strategy for, you know, bigger opportunities such as Lakeside, which I'll talk about in a few minutes, of how do we reposition the community or how do we partner with certain organizations to accomplish bigger economic development objectives. So if we look at the current state of the local economy in Sterling Heights, the unemployment rate is considerably low. Now, this on the surface looks like a very good number, 3.9%. But what ultimately is happening is this is creating a very big pinch on the available workforce of companies that are continuing to hiring. There are less and less people in the workforce right now to hire, and a lot of what's going on, there's a lot of moving around of jobs from company to company. So that number is critically low. We have some interesting things that we're working on that I want to cover as it relates to sort of the long-term talent pipeline for future manufacturing projects. I did pull some information from the recent study we did with EMZ about the gross regional product and imports and exports in the community. Again, I bring these up because they're fairly staggering numbers. Gross regional product of all companies within Sterling Heights is about $6.6 billion. Imports and exports out of our industrial corridor is almost $30 billion annually, which is a very significant number and shows a lot of different trade that's going on globally with the kinds of companies that we have here. On the upper left, just a quick take on our industrial real estate, again, something that is becoming critically low from an inventory standpoint, and this is Sterling Heights as well as all of southeast Michigan, but our vacancy rate for industrial properties is hovering right around 2%. Asking rents are continuing to increase, as you might imagine, due to the low supply. There is, on the net absorption side, there's less and less property to absorb, which is why that negative absorption number is on that list right now. When we look at retail real estate, again, we're actually at a very good number at 4%. We have plenty of inventory still and plenty of opportunities for redevelopment of some of the existing retail properties, such as what's happening with BJ's Brew House. The rents are continuing to increase, which is obviously a very good sign as well. In both cases, there's a high probability of the vacancy, vacant spaces will be leased over the next 60 days. So still a very hot real estate market in Sterling Heights, which is great. Some of the projects that we have been working on, we've talked on, that are now sort of coming to, are coming online, this is the UTAC Corporate Headquarters Project at the former Utica-Vandyke Transit Mix property on Vandyke in the Corridor Improvement Authority District. They are now moved in and operating. That was a $5.7 million investment on the real estate. There were 54 retained jobs by UTAC. That means that those are the employees they had in the community that were staying in the community, and they will be adding an additional 30 jobs over the next couple of years. Good thing for UTAC, homegrown company, startup to becoming a very large entity, making their corporate headquarters here, and a good shot in the arm for the Corridor Improvement Authority District. New investment means new revenue to the Corridor Improvement Authority, means more employees to that area of Vandyke, which I think will help the other businesses located in that corridor. This is a project at Sterling Enterprise Park. This company is Matalsa. They are the steel frame supplier for the Ram 1500 pickup truck. They are a Mexican-based company. This is essentially a warehouse distribution operation where they are using rail to bring the frames into this facility, and then eventually we'll ship them over to shop. This was roughly a $12 million investment and approximately 100 jobs at this location. Flexing Gate, something that we haven't quite talked about enough, I don't think. Flexing Gate is owned by Shahed Khan, one of the more famous manufacturing owners, who's also buying Wembley Stadium and owns the Jacksonville Jaguars, huge tier-one supplier to the automotive industry. They moved their research and development facility into Sterling Heights, opened last fall. Fifty new employees at the location, plus a relocation of additional employees, so about 80 employees overall. Mainly an office build-out, about a $2.2 million investment. We supported this project, and actually, it's coming up next week, but one of the things that we're doing for Flexing Gate is promoting, beginning to promote the fact that they're here for both hiring purposes and just for general public knowledge of who Flexing Gate is and what they do. So one of their corporate folks are coming in town next week to meet at the facility, and then we'll be doing an innovating business with that individual, which you eventually will see. Tissin Krupp has recently reoccupied the former IMCO Technology Building at 7100 15 Mile Road. With up to 100 employees, Tissin Krupp is essentially supplying Chrysler, which I have mentioned before, Chrysler tends to be the gift that keeps on giving, not only because they have invested billions of dollars into that plant over and over again, but we continue to see a supply chain that is locating right within our industrial corridor to help support the programs there. Tissin Krupp Supply Chain Services is essentially going to distribute steel for stamping, and we expect actually that they are going to continue to grow out at this location and are potentially looking at another location very close by, which is good news. Some projects that are on the books, I know Mr. Vanderpool covered this one not too long ago, but these are the, this is the 17 Mile Road Hotel Project on 10 acres in front of Sterling Enterprise Park. This project is sort of been underway for a couple of years. There have been a number of parcels to acquire, a number of property owners to deal with, and at this point, all of the properties are under contract. Site plans have been submitted, and what we expect to happen at some point late summer is groundbreaking on three hotels, Fairfield Inn and Suites at $4.5 million, Spring Hill Suites at $4.7 million, and a Hyatt House at $6.3 million, plus an additional opportunity for a restaurant pad of up to 8,000 square feet, which will roughly be about $2.5, $2.5 million. We will be coming back to city council at some point to discuss a commercial rehabilitation district. Part of our working with the developers on this and pushing them essentially to acquire more property to make a more complete development is being able to offer an incentive to offset some of those acquisition costs. But we thought it was very important that they have, instead of a sort of spotty development with some of those parcels still left over, that we have encouraged them over and over again, and they've worked with us to go out and essentially put all of those properties under contract. So we have a nice seamless development for this. The Catlock Products Redevelopment Project is something else that we brought before council for an obsolete property rehab exemption. Unfortunately for the future tenants of that building, the rehab exemption has expired before a tenant actually has signed a lease, so that's no longer necessarily in play. However, they are nearing the end of the renovation of this building. It's a 150,000-square-foot building, so for the sake of manufacturing inventory, to be able to put this property back in play is very important. It's a $3 million investment, and this property is getting a significant amount of interest. They're having almost weekly walkthroughs with potential tenants that we are in touch with. Another project that we've discussed that is still continuing to move along is the Caldean Community Foundation Project in the Corridor Improvement Authority District. It's a 148 mixed-income residential project with a small portion of retail that'll be between 2,500 and 5,000 square feet. The look of this, and I actually wish I would have showed the facade renderings of this versus the overhead conceptual site plan, but they have continued to provide us with facade detail. It's going to be a very attractive project. And again, this is something that helps accomplish goals of the Corridor Improvement Authority, to have a more, I'll call it a walkable mixed-use type of investment that's putting pedestrians directly within the Vandyke corridor, that's providing a new retail opportunity, and something that we think will help benefit the other businesses in the corridor. They are still dealing with floodplain issues and wetland delineation on site, as well as some engineering issues for stormwater runoff and stormwater retention. As you all know, this property of Vandyke for years has been in a floodplain and gets challenged at certain times of the year, so this certainly has a lot more work to do to make sure the property is developed in a way that the floodplain does not become an issue for the construction, the buildings, or the future tenants of the residential units. We touched on this at city council a few weeks ago. Just wanted to add it on here again. We expect that the environmental work for Liberty Commerce Park, or Liberty Park Commerce Center, is going to start in the next month. This is a 549,000-square-foot speculative industrial building that can be used as a multi-tenant building or a single-tenant building. After the approval of the Brownfield Plan a few weeks ago, there was an application submitted to the Michigan Department of Environmental Equality to find additional incentives to help us support the revitalization and redevelopment of that Brownfield, the contaminated property. So this was May 8. We had Withway Trim, who the city council approved to work with us not too long ago, held our Lakeside Mall Urban Design Plan kickoff meeting. Did have several on council there. Thank you for coming. We had 23 participants overall. We had several real estate developers. We had several other community stakeholders. And the overall objective of this kickoff meeting was to work with Jones Lang LaSalle, who's currently the operator of Lakeside Shopping Center, and our planning team, which includes Withway Trim and the Economic Development Team, to begin to look at different uses, different complementary uses at the mall, to find the highest and best use. Over time, different uses to add to the mall, again, to sort of make sure that the area stays viable for, in perpetuity as long as we can. Ultimately, what we will have, what we will bring before council, which will be under Chris McLeod, is a PUD ordinance that essentially is, that can be assigned to the Lakeside Mall property that will help define what the future uses are, what the landscape guidelines are, what the design guidelines are, setbacks, heights, et cetera. And again, the purpose is to create an instrument that allows for the proper mixture of uses to be developed at the mall over time. Another project, we've got a couple more projects to cover, lots of projects, never a shortage. Where did my cheat sheet go? Oh, so a project we have been working on for the last 18 months or so with the University of Michigan and a program called the Defense Manufacturing Assistance Program, is a feasibility study and now a project plan for what we're calling a robotics collaboration center. The robotics collaboration center is a multi-partner project with the Macomb Intermediate School District, the city, the county, and industry partners, and it is, its purpose is to create a collaborative environment to help meet future talent needs of industry, and using collaborative robotics in a laboratory-type fashion to help with Macomb County First Robotics Teams, First LEGO Teams, Career Tech Ed, and other industry partnerships and research, to ultimately start looking at that long-term talent pipeline that our companies, our manufacturers, and high-tech companies need going forward. Now, in addition to that, Utica Community Schools this fall is opening their MAID Academy. The MAID Academy is the Manufacturing Automation Design and Engineering STEM Academy. And for 2018 fall, which will start with a freshman class, they're already full. I believe they have 90 to 100 students. The purpose of the program is to provide relevant real-world applications. The core coursework is project-based, design-thinking-based. It's an opportunity where teachers, universities, and business partners work together in more of a real, authentic environment. Again, something similar to what I just discussed on the robotics collaboration center, which is much bigger in theory. This is very specific to Stevenson High School. It's going to be very interesting. I also put up here the innovating business slide because our last interview was with Dr. Christine Johns, where she was talking specifically about the MAID facility. She's very excited about it. And I also want to pitch that we have lots of other videos, so go and watch them all. They're really cool. So what's next? We will continue to see development at Sterling Enterprise Park. There are several proposals that have gone out for potential new construction projects. There is going to be a lot of opportunities for speculative industrial building development. I say whenever and wherever because the demand is so high. So we're getting to a point where we have developers that are just looking for any space at all to squeeze in an industrial building because the market is still hot and looks to be so for a long time. Certainly more to come at Lakeside. We anticipate at some point in June that Lakeside leadership through Jones Lang LaSalle will be coming to a city council meeting to share some news about what's happening at Lakeside. We're continuing to work with Withway Trim on the PUD ordinance and also looking at taking field trips to see examples of other mall redevelopment projects that we could learn from. We will definitely see continued expansion of our existing company base, as our companies are doing very well. And we can also see this year additional sign deployment throughout the Sterling Innovation District. We have two more signs teed up to be installed at some point this year. That's my presentation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bonner. Mr. Vanderpool.
Mayor, just in closing, I wanted to say it's obvious we have a significant amount of economic development activity going on in the city. All this activity, which equates to really hundreds of millions of dollars, in addition to all of our roadway work and our city projects going on across the street and throughout our parks, is creating, there's just an amazing energy throughout the city. We see this continuing for the foreseeable future. I want to thank the mayor and the city council for your support of all these really exciting projects that is setting us apart from many other communities across the state and throughout the nation. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Vanderpool. The next item on our agenda tonight is a presentation, and this is a presentation from SEMCOG, actually, a resolution recognizing the 50th anniversary of the city of Sterling Heights, and from SEMCOG, we have Amy Malmer here. And at this time, I'll turn it over to you, Ms. Malmer.
Thank you. I am so pleased to be here tonight to honor the 50th anniversary of Sterling Heights. It's an anniversary that you actually share with SEMCOG. We also were created in 1968. I won't read the whole resolution, but a couple of highlights. It begins with whereas SEMCOG wishes to congratulate Sterling Heights on 50 years of excellence in city government, and whereas early founders believed that Sterling Heights could be a unique city by keeping its identity and developing in a well-planned way, and whereas Sterling Heights continues to be committed to good planning, and whereas Sterling Heights has strengthened southeast Michigan as a regional leader for many years. These are the reasons that Sterling Heights brings so much value to SEMCOG and your partnership with us. In particular, the participation of Mayor Taylor and Mark Vanderpool, as well as other city staff, strengthens the work we do at SEMCOG. So we are really very proud to be able to call Sterling Heights a member, and we wish you continued success over the next 50 years and beyond.
Well, thank you very much. We appreciate it. And we appreciate all the work that SEMCOG does for the city of Sterling Heights and the entire region. So it is my pleasure to accept that. I'll come down and get it, and I don't know if you want to take a picture.
One, two.
Okay. That's what I figured. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. And council, we do have a suggested action, a resolution. Is there somebody who would like to make the motion?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Resolve to accept a resolution from SEMCOG honoring the 50th anniversary of the city of Sterling Heights, Michigan.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? With no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you again, and congratulations to SEMCOG on its 50th anniversary as well. We have another presentation tonight, and this is another swearing-in ceremony for new Sterling Heights firefighters. I'll invite our fire chief, Chris Martin, to the podium. Chief Martin.
It is my pleasure to be here tonight to introduce to you and the community our two latest firefighters that began their career with us two weeks ago. This is our official opportunity to swear them in, which is a requirement of our rules. And before they came to us, they got a lot of training, they're already nationally-registered firefighter, or paramedics. They went to firefighter one and two from the state of Michigan accredited fire academy, and they passed a few rigorous exams, including a background investigation, and a lot of other paramedic stuff that goes along with different qualifications that we have. So immediately to my right is Matt Mardous, he's 26-years-old. Matt grew up in Brighton and graduated from Brighton High School. He went to the Life Support Training Institute in Southfield to become a paramedic. He has previously worked with Livingston County EMS and Brighton Area Fire Authority. And next to him is Brandon Kazmeric, who is 22-years-old. He grew up in Auburn Hills and in Macomb Township, and he graduated from Dakota High School. He got his medic and his fire academy training at Macomb Community College. He has previously worked with Heart EMS and MedStar. Now, Brandon has a great uncle who retired from the Sterling Heights Fire Department many years ago, when he was actually our second EMS coordinator, which is a position he retired in. So, gentlemen, if you don't mind, I'd like you to step over in the corner, and we'll go through your swearing-in.
Ladies and gentlemen, repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Sterling Heights City Charter.
And the Sterling Heights City Charter.
That I will comply with the rules and regulations of the Sterling Heights Fire Department.
That I will comply with the rules and regulations of the Sterling Heights Fire Department.
And will discharge the duties of my office to the best of my ability.
And will discharge the duties of my office to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Mayor, council, if you'd like, I'd like to welcome you down to meet them and shake their hand and congratulate them. So Mayor, they'd like the opportunity to say a few words, hopefully they've rehearsed it really well, so Matt, let's start with you.
You look nervous.
See how they do under pressure?
Thank you very much for the opportunity to be here and look forward to a long career.
Thank you.
I'd just also like to say thank you very much for letting me be here. I wanted to be on this department since I began this career field about three years ago, and it's still pretty crazy that I'm here. Again, I look forward to a long career here as well, thank you again.
All right, thank you very much. Counsel, any comments, any words of wisdom, advice? No? Well, I just would say, welcome to the Sterling Heights Fire Department, we're very lucky to have you and glad to have you. I think you know from the time you have been with the department so far that we have a reputation that's really second to none in the state. We have men and women who are dedicated to the people of Sterling Heights, and as I say to every one of these, at every one of these swearing-in ceremonies, we have residents that are, you know, do what they, what we can do to support you as well. So we've got your back, and if there's anything we need to do to help you perform better, you know, I'm sure you'll let us know, and we're going to be there for you. And we, you know, wish you Godspeed and good luck, and stay safe, and keep us safe, and thank you for, you know, deciding to serve in this capacity. It's a, it's a very honorable profession, it's an honorable thing for you to do, and so we thank you for your service to the city of Sterling Heights. And Chief? That's all I have, thank you. One more round of applause. Thank you very much, Chief Martin. Next item on our agenda tonight is the consent agenda. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on any item on tonight's consent agenda? If not, council, we need a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Koszowski.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Support.
It's been moved and supported, with no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item on our agenda tonight is to consider a request to transfer ownership of a 2017 Class C liquor license business with Sunday sales permit PM and outdoor service from, I'm going to do my best, Legojie Jurovsky, Jovo Blajo Jurovsky, and Kristo Blagojirovsky to Antonio V. Ventimiglia. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? If not, council, we need a motion.
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Zarco.
Resolve that the request to transfer ownership of a 2017 Class C liquor license business with Sunday sales permit PM and outdoor sales, one area, from Legojie Jurovsky, Jovo Blaji Jurovsky, and Kristo Blaji Jurovsky to Antonio V. Ventimiglia be considered for approval.
Support.
All right, it's been moved and supported, is there any discussion, Mrs. Zarco?
Well, you know, in the 15-mile and Dodge Park area, two businesses that have been there for so long, but family-run, are Ventimiglia's and Jovan's. And now, I understand that the Jovan's family feels that this is a time that people want to retire, and, and so Ventimiglia's are stepping up and, you know, are going to expand what they're doing. But I really, as a neighbor, and because of all the people from St. Blaise that go there for one thing or another, if Mr. Ventimiglia is here and would probably explain what his plans are, people would just love that, to hear from him, if that's a possibility.
Come on up to the podium, sir, thank you.
Yeah, what we plan on doing is, we're trying to keep, it's an icon in the city, so we want to try to keep it what it is, and because we're also an icon in the city, we want to be what we want to be. So what we're going to do is, we're going to basically keep their way of running things, their menu intact, and then add our own things to it, because half his customers are my customers anyway. So I already know that they like my food and they like his food, so we're, together, we should have a great business there.
Very good.
I, I appreciate you, and, and I certainly the Jurovsky family, you're a staple there in that neighborhood, and certainly you'll be supported by the same people, so good luck to you.
Thank you, we're not going anywhere, we have kids that need jobs for the next four years.
Keep it in the family.
Counsel, anyone else like to add anything? If not, I would just say, I don't want to let the opportunity pass without thanking you, Mr. Ventimiglia, for what you do for the community, and for the Jurovsky family for being a staple in the community for decades, really. It's good to see that this family business is continuing on. My, my only wish was that you had bought Steve Arino's pizza before it had gone away, which was right at that corner as well. It's probably been at least 15 or so years since it's been gone, but, you know, as a former neighbor at 15 in Dodge Park, I can tell you, you know, for my diet is doing better, not getting those subs every day, but otherwise, I miss being there. So we're, we're lucky to have two great families and to continue this tradition on in the city of Sterling Heights. Wish you very good luck, thank you very much. Counsel, with no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you again. Next item on our agenda is to consider a request to transfer a ownership of an escrow 2017 Class C and SDM liquor license with Sunday sales PM and dance permit, and a new Sunday sales permit AM and new entertainment permit from Scores Investments Incorporated, 4065 15-mile road, to Vince and Jack's Incorporated, 13839 19-mile road. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? If not, council, we need a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs., or Mr. Shannon.
Resolve that transfer ownership of an escrow 2017 Class C and SDM liquor license with Sunday sales PM and dance permit, and a new Sunday sales permit AM and new entertainment permit from Scores Investment Incorporated, 4065 15-mile road, to Vincent Jackson Incorporated, DBA mug pub, at 13839 19-mile road be considered for approval.
Support.
It's been moved and supported, is there any discussion? Mr. Shannon.
No real discussion, I have been watching the progression of this restaurant slash bar that's going in there on 19-mile road near Sheenar. It seems to be an interesting concept, something new for the city. I wish it all the success, because I think that that small plaza there needed some sort of, kind of a kickstart to generate some economic activity there, so that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Sarowski, anything?
It sounds great, and I just support it as well, so very good.
Counsel, any further discussion? With no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item is to consider appointments to the city of Sterling Heights Boards and Commissions. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? If not, council, I believe there is one vacancy to the Housing Commission, and it is an individual who is seeking reappointment, that is Michael Venetis. Is there anyone who'd like to make an appointment?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Resolve to appoint Michael Venetis to the Housing Commission to fulfill a term ending December 31st, 2022, subject to the appointee meeting the qualifications set forth in Charter 4.03 and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support.
It's been moved and supported, is there any discussion? No discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. That concludes that portion of our agenda, we'll move on to communications from citizens. Is there anyone who'd like to speak on any item not on tonight's agenda? Take you, sir.
My name's Paul Cantwell, I live in Sterling Heights. I saw it in the paper a couple, a couple weeks ago, that the City Council is thinking of putting in an assessment to fix the roads of just under 1%. Has that been voted on yet?
We don't do a back-and-forth here, you know, we don't ask questions and answer, but I will tell you that that has gone through.
It has gone through, okay, thank you.
All right, no problem, thank you, sir. Anyone else under communications? Take you, ma'am.
Thank you, my name is Don Organic, and I'm a resident of Sterling Heights for the last 34 years. I have a concern that I attempted to, it's a concern regarding recycling, curbside recycling with GFL, that I attempted to resolve earlier in May. I live in a part of Sterling Heights that gets the garbage, the lawn clippings, and the recycling picked up on Tuesdays, so on May 1st, I expected that to happen, and certainly the lawn clippings and the garbage did. The recycling did not get picked up on my particular street, which is Barcroft Way. On the next day, I contacted first, well, I contacted GFL and left a message there, and then someone called me up, and they said there was no pickup on that particular address because Sterling Heights had notified them that the line that they would use to enter the street was too low, and they were talking, it wasn't the power lines, but the subdivision's a little bit odd in that a lot of power lines run right over the surface, so it's probably cable and maybe foam, but I am not an expert, although I do know that it's probably cable plus something else. They were notified by the city, and then I asked GFL, well, how should I approach this? She suggested that I contact, oh, okay, I contacted then, the DPW spoke with Mary, expressed those concerns. She said she would speak to her boss, who would speak to a boss at GFL, and apparently that conversation occurred because GFL picked up the, the green bins later that afternoon on May 2nd. They, I wanted to pick mine up right away, I mean, I wasn't out there, but Matt from GFL happened to be out there, and what he said concerned me. He said that it wasn't picked up because the lines were too long, too low. They were expecting that their equipment would possibly interfere with those lines, and what they had brought out was a garbage truck. So what I expected to be recycled was now going to go into landfills along with at least four other bins that are, that are on that street. I, I didn't feel like I got any satisfaction, that's why I'm going to City Council, really to let you know that the next week on May 8th, I don't know what happened because I was busy with elections, on today, the same thing happened, none of it got picked up. I do know GFL was in my neighborhood, because when I left the subdivision, they, you know, they have a distinctive way of keeping the, the tops flipped up, so that, you know, to pick it up. And I did see some of those bins on Heatherly and Stephanie that were out by the curb, but the lids were flipped up. So I was concerned that if I went to GFL and I went to DPW, I would not be able to get a good response in either way, because it felt like each one felt the other one was responsible for it.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, thank you, I appreciate it. We'll take that information down, and we'll have somebody contact you by tomorrow with a resolution to this.
Excellent.
Okay?
Thank you very much.
Can you give information to the clerk, or?
Yeah, if you want to give your information to the, to the clerk, you know, your address and phone number, and we'll, we'll be in contact. Anyone else under communications from citizens? Mr. Jefferson?
Charles Jefferson, Sterling Heights. First things first, we, I think I made 26 up, 26 down, no women, no colors, and no transsexual firefighters have been hired. And you folks over there on that side fought for diversity, and you guys aren't practicing it. The firefighters came up here and said that they couldn't live in this community because this community wasn't progressive enough for them. Hey, we said on this side, we hired the best, too. You guys were trying to put that off on us, so we got that. Mr. Vanderpoel, I got to have a question for you. The, the mobile home parks, I noticed when I was, see, I, I travel through the city, I don't, I'm not like the rest of you, I go out and I travel. I noticed they had those plastic, garbage, garbage pails, the GFL garbage pails. I don't know, did the city or have a contract with the mobile home parks, so they would have to get those, those garbage cans, and it, it could be a burden on some of those people in there to pay for, pay for those, those trash cans. Because before, it was just, you just take your garbage to the curb and just put it on the curb, but now it's got to be in the, the trash can, so I was wondering if it was a forced negotiation, so you could tell us that. And now, you can, Mr. Vanderpoel, you can stay out of this, so you can sit out of this. Mr. Taylor, I have a question for you, I told a couple people, I was going to ask you this question. We had tonight the students coming up here for the scholarships. Now, what have you done to ensure that they could come back and be viable part of our community here in Sterling Heights? The reason I know that, I, I do, like I said, I travel this community, and I talk to people of all ages and all categories of people. And I was asking a young man, because he came back and he's living with his mother and father now, and I asked him, because he's going to get his master's degree at Wayne State. I was asking him, what would it take for you to move back to Sterling Heights? And he said it would be, it would take him and five other roommates to move to Sterling Heights. So what kind of affordable housing have you, you came up with? Because these cats coming back, they got car payments, large insurance payments, and student loan debt above their heads. I want to take jobs off, I want to take jobs off of the table, because Brian Kelly said we have 880,000 open jobs here in the state of Michigan. So that means you are fighting with other communities to get these people to come back to us. As we know, we've recently, Amazon said that the reason they couldn't move here, one thing was, it was, no, we didn't keep the talent here in this here community in southeastern Michigan. So what are you doing to keep that talent here? And another thing I would like to ask you about the RTA, because they also said there was no transportation. We see that we, Luke came up here and was talking about all the business, but we're going to need some better transportation to get these people to the spot. So can you answer that question? So can you answer those, that questions? Thank you.
Anyone else under communications from citizens? If not, close that portion, go on to reports from city administration. Mr. Vanderpool, anything tonight?
Mayor, just quickly, in response to a couple of questions, first, the, the city is doing all that it can with respect to housing options and making them available to individuals of all different means. We, we do currently have a number of affordable housing opportunities in the city. As you heard from Mr. Bonner tonight, we're also working on a market rate and affordable housing development on North Van Dyke. In addition to city council recently approving a number of apartment complexes in the city which are currently under construction, including the one at 15 and Van Dyke, so we're being as responsive as we can with respect to that need. It is a need throughout the entire metro area, and we're, we're doing what we can in Sterling Heights. I think that's it for this evening. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Vanderpool. Mr. Koschubski?
Yes, Mayor, we have five items tonight for closed session.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Koschubski. Counsel, open it up. Any reports, new business, unfinished business? Any items, going once, twice? If not, I would just invite everyone to participate in the Memorial Day Parade on this Memorial Day coming up, starts at 9:00 AM, as Mr. Vanderpool said at the beginning of the meeting. Hope to see you there. Mr. Koschubski, we're going to go into closed session. Is there any opportunity or chance that we will be returning?
Not tonight, Mayor.
Okay, so we will adjourn into closed session, and this will be it for us tonight. Mrs. Riska, I guess I need a motion to adjourn into closed session.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Mrs. Riska, a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Radkey?
Yes.
Mrs. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Mrs. Sarowski?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Zarco?
Yes.
Mrs. Koschubski?
Yes.
All right, motion passes seven to zero. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you for coming on and participating.